Okay.
Okay.
We have quite a few items on the agenda, so I'll try to put them through as quickly as we can. The first item is that Mary from Joint Recreation brought over a form we had signed, and it would be for the extending the completion of the bathroom project over Sleeping Park from December 17th, 2010 until June 1st, 2011. Now, we had passed a resolution extending it once already. So, I called Dennis and I said, "Dennis, can I sign this thing without the board's approval? You can, based on the first one, go ahead, but then inform the board if you've done something." So, that's what it's all about. The form itself said, "This is the last extension, otherwise they'll miss the matching funds from Kemp." So, they either got it or do it.
This one's not appropriate for a bathroom, yeah.
Okay. The next one is, we've been asked as a town to put together a team to participate in a trivia contest sponsored by the Friends of the Goshen Library. It'll be in March 5th, 2011 at 6:00 in the Hall of Fame of Trotter. So, we had to get our names back in, who was gonna do what, and there are evidently seventeen teams. And so, I took it upon myself to say, "Okay." Dennis Klick, he's always telling stories, knows more about anything than anybody knows. So, he jumped at the chance.
And you really did?
Yeah. I kinda jumped at the chance too, 'cause I love memorabilia about ten on the Goshen. And then, we thought, thought, and the one that we thought might know the most and fill in for when we were not here was Dick Wallace. He was in the insurance business, he's been around since Bunker Hill. He knows what's going on. And so, the three seniors here, we will try to...
Is this trivia about?
Goshen.
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 Not sports?
No, no.
But you wouldn't do good sports.
Oh, no, I lose.
But Dennis would do alright.
No, this is all about a Goshen trivia.
Okay, thank you.
So, anyway, that's just information. And I apologize, kinda way of putting the team together in advance, but you know, it's March 5th, and they need you to know who's gonna do what, so that's, I just gave it my best shot. The next item is, I've asked Bill to reduce, I mean, to review several cost reduction items, ideas that are being pursued by himself and on behalf of the town. So, Bill, he'll do that.
I have four items that I'd like to share.
You're gonna need to talk into one of these.
You don't have to look at the camera.
They don't have to look at the camera.
This is how it gets into the... Just pull it, there you go. Is it on?
Take mine, Bill.
Here we go.
Take mine, Bill.
That's ours.
Mine, though.
No, two buttons.
Try this one, it's a...
Try this one, it's a...
Mine, Bill, it works.
Okay. Okay, good.
Four items I wanna share with you with that. One that's already in place, and the three we're working on. The first element is our electric, which has been with Orange and Rockland, at least in Seifman here. We recently, in June 2010, switched providers to MX Energy. Now, the bill still goes through Orange and Rockland, that's our right to choose different providers through that system. And we changed in June, and we took a look recently at our larger bills comparatively over the last six months to see what we saved. The O and R cost for the year 2009, when we were strictly with O and R, was about $32,500. For the year 2010, with a mix of O and R and MX Energy, it was $30,224, with a savings of $2,300 in that mix, and that's really not a full year. So, we're looking like we're gonna save a few thousand dollars every year based on this program. This is a six-month program, we get to opt out if we see there is jockeying the other way and go back with O and R. But at the moment, it looks like it's a safe place to be for the electric. And I know, not only did Kemp speak to me, and I know that I've dug his spoke to me before about the program, but I think maybe the village may be on, but also the county. So, we'll take a look and see what that program is, that may be MX Energy as well, I don't know. We'll take a look at that.
Bill, why are you on Energy, Frank? I have a question. Because a week ago, I went up and saw a clerk upstairs, and she gave me copies of the gen, of all the bills, and I was wondering what MX Energy was. Now, if a bill, like this first page, it says $1,365, it says Orange and Rockland, the next page says MX Energy, and it says 834, is that the real price we're paying, 834?
What I'm saying, one is transmission costs. O and R owns lines and the transformer, you have to pay them to get it here. The purchased power is a section.
So, actually, there are two bills there?
Two bills.
Oh, okay. So, at first, I looked at it, and I thought, "Oh, God, they're saving $500 on one month's bill."
Yeah, no, I wish. We have to pay, we still have to pay that piece, the other carrier piece, that's where MX Energy...
They're trying to spend for kilowatts.
Right. Kilowatts, where we're spending. Not the lines themselves.
But even on a 12-month base, you're talking $4,600, not quite $400 a month.
Seems to be trending that way at $4,600.
Okay.
Telephone survey, we're in the middle of that one right now. We have currently comparing costs between our current provider, which is Frontier, and Time Warner Cable slash telephone, since we can get telephony through the internet, and telecom data service. This will continue for the next few weeks, 'cause I don't have all the figures in, but it looks like the quotes that we've gotten from telecom versus what it's looking like it's gonna come through with Time Warner, we will have savings in excess of 500 a month or 6,000 a year. And I'm shooting low on that, I hope, because, again, I don't have all the data in, but some of the line items I have, that I know where we're gonna save, it looks like it'll be a little more than that. And that's to bring the 14 POTS lines over, those are the hard lines that come into the building, that doesn't deal with the dedicated lines, you know, the individual lines within the building. Those can be brought over, but the suggestion is, at least for now, is legal alone for now, let's see how the POTS lines work, let's make sure we don't just bring the entire ship into harbor, and then wish that we'd stay at sea, I don't know, but...
Now, what, how soon can we get this thing up and running? 'Cause we've been talking this...
Well, it'll be fairly soon, it'll be probably a couple of weeks until I get the final quote from Time Warner, and that's the last piece.
Okay.
Once we see that, it looks like that's probably gonna be the best way to go.
Right.
I'll make a presentation to the board, you'll look at the facts and figures, and then we'll give them the high sign.
Okay.
They'll come in, they'll install two little modems in the telephone room.
Now, there's, so there are three companies buying for the business? The current company, Frontier, this Time Warner Cable, and that third company, Warner.
And Frontier over there now.
Okay.
Bank fees, which has been an ongoing pain in the neck. Bank fees have gotten larger and more prominent, because unfortunately, they've gotten themselves in a mess where they're gonna figure out a way to squeak out of the dark as well. They pass them on to everybody, for the most part, municipalities get away a little bit cheaper, for the most part, they do excuse some of those things, but not all of them. We're currently, we're in the process, we have a lot of small accounts, some are still in use, we don't use them often, that kind of an isolated capital type of account, it really says we need to keep them open, which we do use them. Few other accounts are done. There's a Craigville, Craigville Bathroom renovation sort of thing, it's got like $40 in it. But we're being charged $20 a month just to have that account. And, you know, 20 times 12 is more than we need to pay for an account that we probably won't use again. There'll be a few accounts, we will be coming forward with resolutions to close those accounts, because we don't need them, we'll make sure the balances in those accounts find their way back to the proper fund balance account, main account. Other accounts, we will probably move away from the bank that's making those charges to us, to a bank that either does not charge or charges less fees. We've already had some reduction by working with the Bank of America and consolidating our escrow account, isolating them away from the daily activity fees that they give us, because those should not be affected by the daily, the daily fee, so we've saved some money there. So, that will be ongoing, that will be a little more lengthy, because we do have to research. An old account such as the Solation Acquisition Account, which still has some cash in it, has always stayed replaced while we were doing the renovations under the other account, so that we made sure that we had isolated funds, that we could watch, we knew where they were, they weren't mixed in with this fund, and we had to go back. Now that the acquisition and the renovations or whatever we've done are pretty much done, we need to find out where that money goes, put it into the right account, close that account down, that's one of them. And I, we've got about 20 accounts we're looking at, over a period of time. Our fourth item, Doug can probably speak to more than I can, simply is that Orange and Rockland has agreed to come in and do an energy audit of our building, and I don't know, maybe the other buildings, Highway and Police.
Gonna, gonna look at all the buildings, and this is a light audit, the first one. And then, they're discussing with us the energy audit, which is everything remaining. So, but the light audit, supposedly it's a hundred dollars a building, but they'll charge us to do it. They'll do it, and assume, put the first light bulb in or change, then they don't charge us anymore, so it should be a walk. And I got noticed that from the county, the county has some funds that are not matching to the discrete money, in terms of us. If we find some things that we can compete for by the end of March, I think we have to have our request in for that money. So, we'll be trying to finish with that.
That's based on the energy audit?
Right.
So, when are they doing?
I just got it today, I think it's the end of March.
Yeah, it's similar to Goshen.
Okay. So, those, at the current time, those are the cost-cutting programs that we're looking at and researching and making photocopies and studying, which those are flipped over, we'll look at other items as well, and, you know, throughout the year, make sure we pick up something else and where we can save some, some energy. And I know, I know these windows, that's another thing that should be studied.
Yes.
I have a stiff neck every now and then when I go home, you know, they're not great windows. It's another subject, but we are losing heat to those windows. So, it goes on and on. Questions? I'll leave a copy, we'll get it, I'll copy it right over there.
Well, Bill, I'd like to thank you for what you're doing on this, and, you know, as we've been saying all along, it's, you don't save dollars, you save pennies. And that's where the real, it's cumulative, once you start saving it, it continues on, and so, I'm kinda proud of you, proud of the people, Barbara, the others who are working on all this stuff, making all the contacts.
Yeah, and just to let you know, it's not just me, it is Christine, and Jennifer, and Barbara, who pull these documents, make the comparisons, you put them on a spreadsheet, you take a look at them, and so, I have a team of people working on it, which is a nice thing, they're good to work with, so they deserve credit for that.
Good, Nice Ed too.
Haven't touched Nice Ed gas yet.
Because they have the same type of thing, they have, you can go to different vendors, what is called ENSOs or...
Not part of that one, but when MX Energy came in, and they took a look, they advised us that their program probably wouldn't work as well with the Nice Ed, why, I don't know. So, we thought we would do a separate audit on that and go where we could best be served with that one. That's one utility that we haven't touched yet.
Okay.
So, I'll leave this on.
Yeah, 'cause you're next, I'm gonna put you on for the 2010 miscellaneous year, anybody?
Oh, let me see what's on the gym.
You wanna borrow my packet, or do you have it, your transfers?
No, I don't have it. If you've got questions, I'll just look at it when you go.
Just discussing yourself, Steve.
Yeah. All right, and this is a standard thing that we do every year, that we are called by the state of New York to make sure we make our annual budget transfers, and we should not ever close books, where we have budgeted items that we've had some cost overrun, or other items where we've run under cost, is to make sure that we balance out, you know, move our budget dollars through them. This is what we do every year. This year, no different than last year, it acts a little bit similar, because since we had tax sorcery hits last year, and the legal department, the engineering department, again this year was much heavier. And if you take a look at the A Fund, which would be, and they're categorized by category, one, two, three or four pages long, about probably in the middle of the fourth page, we'll say about a half a million dollars worth of budget transfers. And the biggest items that make that up are legal and our engineering, from tax surts and appraisals and that sort of thing, moving that money around from other areas, which is the contingent funder, we have to take them front balance, which is why it's critical to have a good fund balance, when items like this come up, we can cover them. I would invite, if you're looking at anything in particular, if you have a question on it, and I can't answer, I will, you know, get the answer on it, let me know what it is. But I am looking at the legal line, and you know, up to 500, there's 272,000 alone is for the legal block. Engineering as well, 88,000. So, you know, you're two-thirds of the way there to the half a million dollars, and that's really mostly to the tax surts, and, you know, a couple of lawsuits. Appraisals alone for tax surts were, was 81,000, 2010, and I expect that not to be different next year. Fund B, middle page four, without even looking, I think that was 270, 370, 2021, fund balance, budget transfers. That actually, the largest part of that, we have, I don't know if I messed up the pages, but we have retro pay, $280,000 is in that mix. Let me just pull back here.
But that was PD, and that was in contingency of the Gimlet?
Yes. Yeah, so a lot of, a lot of the items in D were moved over either from contingency or fund balance to cover, to cover that. We had, at 80,000, we had grant matching funds for $48,000, so I still have to make a budget transfer to cover the, the expense side of that. However, the revenue was there, it came in for the grant, so it's not really a bad item, I still have to cover it. 28,000 in auto maintenance in the Police Department, so probably two-thirds to three-quarters expenses in the Police Department for those items, maintenance, grant matching, and retro. We put that in the Police...
Now, grant matching, how about, said you got my copy, what were the ones that were in matching?
I'll have to look that up, and I'm not aware, I know it was not a police car, and it may not even have been a matching, it may have been a full grant.
Okay.
I think the last couple of years, we've said, we put under grant matching, so we can isolate it out.
Okay.
But grants are fine, as long as we don't have to match, and we've pretty much done that the last couple of years.
Okay.
I will find out what that is. And the fifth item that is larger than the fund would be the Police, Part-Time Officer Regular Wages, that's the one that seems to be burgeoning a little bit. The rest of the wages are, again, the retro pay. So, mostly the fund, fund balance is due to the block for Police. The DA Fund, which is equivalent to the A Fund, that involves village and town tax preparers like the DA Fund does, we have a total of $16,000 to move around, and that's really almost nothing, it's like a nickel. A few lines, a few thousand here, a few thousand there. The DA Fund has the fund balance, and they also have the contingency, so we're fine on those line items. DB Fund, which is town only, Highway, $400,000. I have $109,000 in the street maintenance, and that is because a lot of work in 2010 was done mostly on the road maintenance rather than snowplow. We didn't have that heavy of a snowplow this year, we're seeing something a little different at the end of the year, and certainly at the beginning, you'll see at the end of 2011, will be quite so high there, it'll be a little higher roll than the DA Fund. Bill, I'll have to take a look at the 191,000 inch fund trans, oh, I know what that is. That's an item, that is our road maintenance program, and that goes into an HE Fund, which is a capital fund. I must show it as an expense to make the transfer of cash from one fund to the other. That's really where our capital money that comes from taxpayers goes, and that's not a, that's not an overexpense, that's just moving it from the capital account into the DB Fund. Our sewers are, you know, they're what they are, they're a lot different than the tax, tax accounts, because they are rates. We set the rate, and if the customers cut down their water usage, we don't get enough revenue in, doesn't matter whether we raise rates, we don't sometimes, that, you know, the more they cut on water, the better they feel about it, but, you know, if I need 50,000, I need 50,000, whether you use the water, you know, cost is cost. So, we do move the dollars around there. We said the S A Fund represents Hamiltonian Park Sewer, that's about $11,000 of moving fund balance money or contingency money around. S B, Arcadia Sewer, same thing there, it's about 20,000 there, I think the big item was in the legal department for Arcadia Hills Sewer, about $57,000 there, so that was probably just less than half of what that total is. The S C account, Hamiltonian Water account, is, again, it's $168,000, but there are two items there that really are cash items, but because we spend the money out through our cash book, that we had in the cash book, they get posted as an expense account. One is the bond anticipation note, the payoff of that water main, which we had the money for, but it shows this as an expense, therefore, we have to take it out of fund balance to, to cover it, which was not budgeted for. Same with the underfund transfer, we had fund balance left over that we were able to apply to Hamiltonian Park on the sewer side, because we were able to, we were over-collecting on one, under-collecting on the other, and we're sending it over, so that those rate pairs get the benefit of their own money.
We don't have a problem moving the load to 400,000.
Well, we, we agreed to do that back in April, when we had to land review, because we had excess in water and incident.
Right, and I did check with the state on that. When I first started here, I checked with the state, are there really money between Hamiltonian and Hamiltonian and Arcadia and Arcadia? I was told, "Well, you really can't do that." And then, well, why wouldn't I? If I'm Bill Standish, and I live in Hamiltonian Park, and I'm paying the water, and I'm paying the sewer, why, I'd like you to do that, that's my money. But when I checked with them on this, and they said, "You know, we understand why you're in that position, the water mains, that's an okay thing to do, you need to have a fairly good reason why, you just don't just do it willy-nilly," regardless of, even though it's the same taxpayers' money. So, they still was okay with that.
Okay.
Arcadia Hills Sewer, same thing, about 20,000. Larger items there, there's the larger items here. Testing, water treatment, purification, 2,500 and 2,600. I'm not real sure about that, whether we had more to do, whether we hadn't done the test, we're not on a regimen of the water testing and purification. That's around $5,000 right there, just in that one block. Stump Hedge Water, looks like it's just the one area, $1,500, $100 here, $50 there, moving in between the line items, I'm just spent here, overspent there. Logical and normal. And S F, for Scottstown, 20,000, and somehow, I'm not having that one page here, it's probably on the floor, but I know what it is, it's that new tank tower capital item for which, again, was a cash item, which when we spend it, obviously gets posted as an expense, which it is, and so then we take it out of the fund balance and apply it. So, that's it.
Any questions, Wes Ford?
You explained all this, and you were here, first me trying to learn all that.
You are expected to remember that next year, so I don't have to do that.
I did last year.
I'm just kidding.
No, we believe you. We believe you.
I'm gonna tell me 29.
Bill, thank you very much, have a safe trip home, I appreciate you staying over there.
Yes, thank you. Pretend it off.
Okay, the next item is just as information for the board, and we can discuss if you'd like, it's a village bond resolution for $7 million to finance removal of the landfill dirt pile and potential impact on the Hamiltonian Park and Arcadia Hill residence. You can see in your packet, this was something, it was February 14th, the village trustees passed, and it's just stating what it's all about, and seven million, so, I'd say, I'd agree with them on wanting to bring it to everybody's attention, is because we first heard it's gonna be 5 million, then 6 million, now ultimately 7 million. And I know no more than what you know on this one. It's a lot of money. Okay, the next one is, we have a request, Sergeant Fowes, Police Department, to purchase a 1911, I mean, sorry. You can tell I, I have a 1910, but a 1911. 2011 Ford Crown Victoria Police Intercepted Automobile, purchase price is $24,718. You can see the detail of that on the next page. I did ask Sergeant Fowes today, I said, "Well, what about all those bells and whistles?" And he said, "Well, we have, there are some other things I want to put on this, I mean, it gets here, but this is basically the car itself." So, this is in the forecast, the budget. And so, if someone would like to make a motion that we authorize the budget officer to proceed on with us, purchase?
No questions.
Well, then, we'll...
So moved. I'll make, I'll second it for that.
Okay, all right, now, any discussion?
I think we have the same concern, I want to find out. No, 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 first, first thing is, the 24,000 worth, Crown Victoria is around $30,000 previous to this. I just wanna know why is this cheaper? Is there something missing?
I think this is the last year they're gonna make it, but I don't know if it's...
It is, it is.
Now, you have Ford stock, right?
Screwed. I sold mine also.
We'd like helpful. I can't drive.
Hey, we love a soulful... I don't know the answer to that question, what you see here is what we get with all these things.
Bill, I can't elaborate, 'cause I didn't compare the two, but if we had the invoice, it's apparently, most of them are the options that he ordered. Now, he said when it comes in, are they gonna switch some of the options that we have now with the new ones?
Yeah, the light bars, and the radios, and all that stuff.
But the invoice is the invoice, and it's on State D, so what it is, is, it is low, it is, it is low. And it's a 2011, too.
So, this is the legislature that's making Crown Victoria?
Yeah, that's what I was told.
Yep.
And, there's one that's gonna be coming off the line then, Bill?
I heard.
There's one that's coming off the line, with this in addition to the...
No, this'll be just replacing, there's mileage, they got the mileage on them, I think this one is like 255,000, it's replacing, so it's...
Yeah, there's one that's 245, right.
Yeah, yeah.
245.
So, it's gonna be replaced.
That's where I guess there's some of the stuff over to it?
Yep. Any other questions?
Yeah, not a question, I still have the question, why would you use the A engine more? They're, they're, they're powerful, and six cylinders are just as efficient, just as powerful, and less money. And this is the last year of the Crown Vic, not the May. I guess we have to put some in the budget, but I'd go for a seven-cylinder, be four-cylinder, eight-cylinder, with my money.
Well, we can ask for a four-cylinder, a six-six-cylinder.
I own a six-cylinder, most of my cars are six-cylinders, and I'll put them up against an eight-cylinder any day of the week for around here, maybe not on the highway, but...
Now, does Chesterhead, someone told me Chesterhead, six-cylinder.
Nester County, couldn't pay eight cylinders when I was a kid.
Last year, we had this discussion.
Yeah, I still say it.
And we, in our work session before they came and asked for the eight-cylinder, we did discuss about switching over to six cylinders to save gas, which would save dollars, and you get more mileage. And then, the Police, you know, PD came back with a suggestion, you remember, Bill?
Yeah.
And all the different reasons why you should think about the eight, I guess longevity did...
Longevity, they have that a lot better, they were a lot safer, there were a myriad of reasons, and we did do the comparison a year ago, I don't remember the specific items, but at that particular time, yeah...
I'd go for a six-cylinder if I could.
Yeah. Longevity, it has 100,000 miles, they want, they want us to sell. I got 120,000 on my six-cylinder, it's running just as strong as they are, boy.
Uh-huh. I don't know, you know... Uh-huh. I mean, I don't know, you know, we did have this conversation, and we went in depth as to the two, the reasoning. Now, I don't remember, but we did come up with the fact that the Crown Victoria for the money would be more prudent at that point. Maybe it was because they were untried and they were, the police vehicles anyway, were not holding up.
I heard if he was forty, he was coming out with six cylinders. But anyway, somewhere on that, I think.
Well, no, this is.
While we do this, can we actually go out and find out what the state bid is for a six-cylinder? We don't, I mean, a week or two is not going to make a great deal of it.
Just so you know, Bill, it's not the purchase price that is.
The operating expense.
Absolutely, yeah.
It is the mileage per gallon that is the biggest difference. Which in the long run saves you thousands of dollars, because you get.
I think in the short run, based on what I see in Far East, this could be a real problem. As with all the, you know, Yemen and Libya and other, I mean, today, the stock market went down and the price of fuel.
It went up, it improved.
Went up. So, I don't know, I don't need to pretend about what the future's going to hold, but, you know, maybe it's a prudent time, because we keep these cars to the for years.
Yep.
To find out what are the options, other than just this one?
I support a new police car, except for the mileage on our car.
Yeah, sure.
I think the chief should have worked into the purchase of a six-cylinder rather than an eight-cylinder.
Can we then?
Let's hold on.
Yeah, so. Okay, we'll table this motion. Well, actually, why don't we withdraw this motion? And then we'll do it all over again on Thursday or Thursday.
I'll go my side.
Okay. I'll withdraw my first.
Very good. Thank you very much, Dan. Good discussion. Okay. Does anybody else have anything for the regular session? You know, the number, item number four under executive session, we need to move up to the regular meeting. And so, I'm going to put this up on the regular meeting. Review the proposed water sewer contract developed between the heritage states and the town of Ocean, set a public hearing from March tenth, two thousand and eleven. And I'd say at seven-thirty or soon thereafter, here in Town Hall. What this is, is I talked to Dennis today to get on with this, so we can, we need to establish the public hearing. Even though we're still working on the detail of what will be reviewed on March tenth. So, we still got more discussions to go with the applicant. So, would someone like to make a motion, then, that we establish a public hearing regarding this subject for March tenth, two thousand and eleven, here in Town Hall at seven-thirty or soon thereafter?
I will second.
Any discussion? All fairs say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. What we'll do is then, we will send a letter to all of the people in Hamiltonian Park, and we'll put in the papers, so that other people who live in the area can also have benefit of this public hearing. Okay, so, would someone like to make a motion, then, we adjourn the meeting, go into executive session to discuss an updated village-town sewer arbitration status, review the two thousand and ten village sewer charges for Hamiltonian Park and Arcadia Hills, and authorize the town budget officer to pay for them as directed by the board. And we'll have that in form of a motion or resolution on Thursday. Update the board on the Time Warner franchise contract renewal. Update the status of a personnel case we have here in Town Hall with regard to arbitration. Review the Owens Road subdivision. Couple of items about that I'd like to bring to your attention. We have quite a few items under proposed tax surcharge settlement proposals. And then discuss the text of a potential law regarding subdivision bonding.
There was one more that I know I had asked, didn't get on the agenda, but we have a personnel issue with the police, and we had talked about this at our last meeting for everyone to review, and I would like to just go over the status and.
Okay.
Okay.
No intent to overturn.
With no intent to overturn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Or whatever.
Any discussion? All fairs say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Neil, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for having me.